A sign and sheet?
No, um, no, I just let her know.
Do we need a sign and sheet for here, though?
Um, no, I usually just. She can usually catch it from me getting it up. Although we probably should. Kind of lax, tired.
Hmm?
Never mind, I got it. I want it. Four days. Two days of travel, two days of. It'll be okay.
It's sad.
It's like this in her closet. I tore her closet apart looking for these boots. I don't know what she did with them. I think it's Nairobi.
Wait until about the, about the paper record. Wait until that agenda item and then Arnie will call you. So being the first meeting after town meeting, I will call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. We will start with nominations for Select Board Chair.
I'll make a nomination for Arnie Janitas for Chair of the Select Board.
My second.
Heather Chase made her nomination. Lee Gustafson seconded. Any other nominations for Arnie as Chair? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I can hand it to Arnie. Take it away.
I'd like to just thank the board for having confidence in my abilities to maybe do this. I'm not sure if that's the reason why, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
It's punishment, Arnie.
Sometimes I wonder.
No, you do a great job and I appreciate your work.
Thanks.
We all appreciate it. Thanks.
The first item on the, well, the second item actually is approve our minutes from.
We're going to do the nominations for Vice Chair.
Oh, yeah, huh? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can any of us nominate for the Vice Chair? Or does Arnie do it?
Well, nominations for Vice Chair are open.
Okay. Well, I'll nominate Heather Chase, Vice Chair.
And then the clerk and then a few other things, so.
Right, there's no other nominations.
Heather's nomination is, do we need seconds on nominations? No.
But you need a vote.
I'm also going to nominate Lee Gustafson.
So we have two people, Lee Gustafson and Heather Chase. Any other nominations? Is there discussion with this, too?
Sure.
There could be. Does anybody want to say anything regarding the nominations?
I think they're both great options and I just want to be clear with that. I just thought we'd throw it out there.
Sure.
Well, I'm absolutely willing to continue to do it if the board wants me to. And if the board chooses to shake it up a bit, that's good, too, because Lee's a good guy.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind taking on that role. All right. So we have to do a paper ballot or something? Because we've got two, two people. Or do we just put it out there?
Or you can do paper ballot, whichever you want.
Just want to do a roll call on this. I'll, I'll put the name out there and we say yes or no. Well, you vote for one person, right?
I'm going to vote for one person.
All those in favor of Lee Gustafson as, as the Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those in favor of Heather Chase as Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it's Heather Chase for Vice Chair. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next position is Clerk of the Works.
Clerk, Board Clerk, yep.
And nominations for Clerk of the Works. Clerk to the Chair.
It's Clerk to the Select Board, Select Board Clerk.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're not going to have one?
No, I'll nominate Lee Gustafson.
Are there any other nominations? Lee?
Finally.
All those in favor of Lee Gustafson as Clerk to the Select Board, Select, yeah, Select Board, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Lee, thank you.
Sure.
So those are the only three that we do right now, yeah?
Yep.
Can we discuss meeting dates and times right now as well, or is that separate?
What's that?
Meeting dates and times, is that right now as well?
Yeah, yeah, we should do that now, too. So usually it's been the first and third Mondays.
Wednesdays.
Wednesdays. And it's been working out pretty good. If there's anybody that can't make the six o'clock or somebody wants some different times. I know Ben, sometimes you, you, when you're working at the Academy, six was a little tight for you.
It's a little tight. I was going to throw out there and I will certainly make the accommodation for everybody. It's, I'm, I'm the new person. If anyone else could do Tuesdays, I would, that would work better for me. So I'm throwing that out there.
If it was what, six thirty?
Tuesdays, honestly, with sports schedules with kids, six thirty would be best. But Tuesdays, I've got a little more flexibility in my schedule than I do on Wednesdays.
You're saying Tuesday?
Tuesday. If it works for others.
Hey, I could do Tuesdays, but I've made a commitment for the last three months, or the next three months, so I couldn't do it for the next three months.
I'd, I'd have a hard time with Tuesdays also because some of the other committees and things that I'm involved with, too, are on Tuesdays and stuff and I.
That's fair. I would, if we continue with Wednesdays, then yes, something a little later would be better.
Six thirty work?
Let's give it a shot.
Yeah, is that okay with the rest of the board, six thirty? I mean, that, that used to be our time, wasn't it, Bill? Long, quite.
No, it was seven.
Seven o'clock. It was seven o'clock for a while, too.
And then it moved to six thirty and then it moved to six.
If, if others were up for trying seven, but I realize that's late, so.
I.
Might be able to work.
I, for me.
It's up to you guys. I, I could make it work if I had to.
Six thirty to seven. I prefer six.
Six thirty would be better for me than seven.
It's a pretty good compromise, six thirty. We'll see how that works out, huh?
I can make it up.
Yeah, let's, let's see how that.
So the first and third Wednesday, six thirty will be our regular scheduled meetings. Everybody okay with that? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Is that the last thing for the reorganization?
Yeah.
Next item is to approve our minutes from our February sixteenth meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February sixteenth.
My second.
Lee Gustafson's the motion and Heather, oh, Heather. Lee Dakin's the second. Any changes, corrections, omissions, errors? Anybody have anything to remark regarding the minutes from February sixteenth?
I have none.
You have one?
None.
Oh.
None?
I just looked on page three and the only thing I see at line two is tabs versus tables. So it says tables on, keep tables on rather than tabs on. So just take out that L E.
Anybody have anything else? Lee, that was it, just that one thing?
It's the only thing I found.
All those in favor of approving the minutes with that one correction, please say aye.
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 Citizens' comments? If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments, either here or the folks out in Zoom?
Linda Dyak looks like.
No, that's the cursor.
Is that, is it?
No.
That's our cursor.
It's our cursor. Tim Roper does, though.
Oh, it turns yellow.
Yes.
Turns, okay. Mr. Roper, go ahead.
Just, just a request that if Lee Dakin can move her mic a little bit closer, it would be easier for us to hear out here in the ether. Thank you.
Thank you, I forgot.
Linda Dyak?
I told Julie this yesterday, but I think I should tell all of you. I think she's just been doing a fantastic job. That's all.
Thank you, Linda.
Yep.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
And we're in the middle of her evaluation. That'll go a long way. I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Hearing none, we'll go to old business. Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. Winter Carnival, we came up, Winter Carnival Weekend was a great success this year. Matt tried a few new things. We add a Winter Carnival Committee, Committee, there were like three or four of us. Added a couple new features, ice carving, brought in a gentleman who does ice carving and also did fire sculptures. In addition, we had a, was supposed to be a snowshoe hike, but due to the lack of snow, it was more of just a hike.
Spike hikes.
Spike hike on the New Brookside Trail. They were, they were great additions. We will definitely include them in future years and expand them. We had a lot of people around for the weekend. A lot of people attended the Pinnacle on Saturday. Definitely lots of people at the Broom Hockey on Sunday, which is always popular. Next year, we are hoping to get some new, or some additional teams to play. I'll be talking to Chester Fire about a team. And, but it was a big draw for Chester. It was a great weekend. So thank you to Matt McCarthy, Scott Blair, and Lee Whiting and myself all worked on adding some new features, trying to build that weekend.
The Little Snowmobiles for the kids was a big hit.
They had like two hundred kids.
Kids were beaming away on that one.
Had the best time, so that is just a huge. And that and Peter Hudkins with the.
The horses.
That's always, everybody loves that. Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And, and the ice sculptures on the Academy lawn were just spectacular.
They were great and it was fun to watch them. Next year, hopefully we'll get more of a draw now that we've done it once. You know, we can kind of build on that, but it was definitely fun.
Yeah.
Those horses of Peter's are over two thousand pounds.
I felt so bad for them.
One was two thousand pounds, the other was like twenty-four hundred pounds.
They're beautiful.
Massive animals.
They are beautiful.
It was something.
Yeah, it was a great weekend. Speeding, I'll skip to speeding. I received an email from a property owner on Andover Road with concerns as to what was going on with getting up the speed radar signs. They have been ordered, they have, like with the rest of the world, have been backordered. Anticipated arrival date is May. They will go up as soon as we, as soon as we get it, we, it will go on the, on the posts that are there. And you probably have noticed, so Police has rearranged the schedule a little bit. Officers are out patrolling more often, sitting in town more often, just trying, working hard to be more visible. The Public Safety Department, Police, Fire and Ambulance have been, had a few meetings. We'll be meeting again on Friday, but they are looking to start adding some community events over the summer, something along the lines of maybe, you know, June, July, August, September. On Saturday, there's a Fireman's Breakfast, except it wouldn't be called that because it would be all Police, Fire and Ambulance. But, you know, a breakfast, just a way to bring community members in. There, we are looking at hosting an event late summer, early fall. Again, another kind of open house. You know, they can do some demonstrations out back in the field that's been cleared and, and so they're working on some community events to take place this summer on the property. So stay tuned for those details, they're coming. And then lastly, the solar farm. So Jim and I had, have had some lengthy discussions involving the solar farm, hoping it's going to be on the next agenda. So the first hurdle that we need to overcome is Jim is not entirely of the opinion that the town, the town itself has the authority to own a utility such as electric. He is researching that. Most municipalities, and, and I have sent something out to the Town Manager, there's a, there's a, an email group that is Town Managers in the state, to talk to other Town Managers about if they own a, a facility and how they do it. The ones that we are aware of are not actually owned directly by the municipality. There, there is a separate entity that is set up within the municipality to do that. So those are the finer details that Jim is looking into to see how, to see how that works. Just find some precedence first, first, first and foremost. Find some.
Julie, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So in my mind, the solar field is not a utility, it's a generation, generation facility, much like a generator that you'd use for emergency purposes. So I guess I'd ask for clarification unless you already have that.
Well, what, what the issue is, is if we were to purchase a solar field, we are generating and selling too, because we're buying the contracts from two other people that are purchasing solar off that field. So we, so unless we were to figure out how to buy out those contracts, which I'm not sure that we would be able to do, we would be the property owner, the, the utility owner and selling power or generating power that is distributed to these two other entities. And that's where he's kind of like, so just searching the law, searching precedent, seeing if the precedent is there, what would be involved, that's hurdle number one, just to make sure that there's even authority before we spend any more time.
So I'm going to, I'm going to send an email asking for clarification.
Yes.
From somebody that I work with that does this all the time.
Great, great. Yes, that would be great. Very helpful.
And towns have purchased them before.
Yeah, the, the point about us, if we own the solar field, selling power to somebody else, that's.
That's the issue.
I don't understand.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue.
Now, if we, if we consumed all the power ourselves, there'd be no issue because it's not a utility. And even if it's selling it to somebody else, I still don't think we're a utility. We're just a generation facility that has excess power that we're selling to somebody else. So, all right.
If you have a contact and can get that answer quicker, Lee, that would be great.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's interesting, because if there were no other contracts that we had to honor, would that be enough to supply all our electrical needs for the town? Or is it not enough?
I think, I think so. I mean, that's a hu, it's a hundred fifty kilowatt system and it should make a ton of power.
We do use a lot.
Yeah, we do use a lot, but I mean, it would cover, from what I understand, it would cover a lot of the bill, maybe not all of it, but a lot of it.
Of the, of the municipal-owned buildings.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
How old is that?
It's seven years.
Seven years it's gone.
And is it a twenty-year lifespan on the panels?
The panels are warranty for twenty-five years typically and the inverters are five to ten. I'm not sure what the warranties are on those things.
Okay.
So there's a lot of little details and things to figure out before we go that route, for sure.
Because after the twenty-five years is up, they start losing their.
Well, so.
How much power they actually produce.
So just to be clear, that's a prorated warranty. So they're guaranteed to make either eighty or eighty-five percent of their nameplate rating at that twenty-five-year mark. They do degrade mostly in the first couple of years, but then more slowly after that. But they still will make power. There's so, there's solar panels out in outer space that are over fifty years old that still make power. So it's not like it'll go completely dead. The worst thing that could happen to the solar panel itself would be some kind of damage to shore or hailstones or whatever. It's the inverters that convert the DC power that the solar panels generate to AC that connects to the grid. That's the weak link, I guess.
So once Jim determines if we have the authority to, to own this, the next step would be to do a pretty good analysis of revenue stream, what that would look like with the other two contracts and, as well as expense. And from there, you would need to determine, or give me authority at that point, to hire an appraiser. The way the contract reads, there would be a mutually agreed upon appraiser between us and Greenbacker to get a 2022 or modern day current evaluation.
So there's no number in there right now?
No, 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 no. What, what is lang, what the language is that we would have a mutually agreed upon appraisal of the property. But before we get there and before you spend the money.
Make sure it's doable.
Well, we, exactly. Let Jim find out the legal background behind it and then him and I can work on some revenue and expense, kind of put a table together that maybe shows that situation. So I don't know that that'll be ready for the next meeting as we're kind of doing this background research on authority, but it's coming. So that's all I have for old business.
Any board members have anything they'd like to discuss on old business?
I have nothing.
No? All set? I hear that click and I gotta look up to see if there's a hand or something or if it's just somebody joining the.
No hands.
Next item on our agenda are annual appointments. Everybody got in their packet a 2022 appointment list. And I guess I'll just go down the list and read them all and then we just make one motion for the whole, for the whole sheet.
That works.
Animal Control Officer for one year. Police Chief, Semitary Sexton, one year. Jeffrey Sheldon. We don't have anybody for the Connecticut River Authority. And I'm not exactly sure what that is.
That's move over.
That's move?
That's.
That's the move?
Mm-hmm.
Didn't we think of someone last year? Because we didn't have anyone last year and we were going to ask someone.
We know, yeah, we haven't been able to find anybody interested in serving on their board.
That's probably a commitment of what, once or twice a year with them?
No, that Connecticut River Transit Authority is pretty active.
Are they?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's more of a time commitment than.
Have we advertised for it?
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we do.
So maybe we'll just get the details on what it entails.
Sure. Yeah.
You know, at least we'll have an idea of what it, what we're asking people to get involved with.
Sure, I can do that.
Senior Solutions, Linda Stoll, one year. Emergency Manager, one year, Town Manager. Fence Viewers, one year. Frank Bosch, Jack Cable and Tony Weinberger. They've been doing it and they're still doing it. I looked up what they do and they don't come up that often, but they're still in there.
We actually used them this year.
Did you?
We did.
For a property adjustment?
We did.
Yeah.
First time that I've ever seen it happen, but yeah.
First Constable, one year, Adam Waddell. Greenup Day Chairman, one year, Frank Kelly. Inspector of Lumber, Shingles and Wood, one year. Tony Weinberger. I bet you haven't used that one, though.
I don't recall, not in my seventeen years. Harry might remember one.
No? No? Pound Keeper, one year, Police Chief. Regional Planning Representative, Tom Bach has been doing this position for quite a while with the Mount of Scutney Regional Planning and he since has moved out of town. I believe he lives up in Chittenden County now somewhere. I'd just like to thank him for all the years that he has done it. And in his place, we have a volunteer, our Town Manager, Julie Hans, who'll be taking over that position. So Julie, thanks for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's an important thing to have a good representation there. There's a lot going on there that affects our town. Regional Planning Commission Alternative is Derek Sursow. He's been in that position for quite a long time also. Road Commissioner, Town Manager. Secretary to the Select Board. Look, I didn't say selectmen that time.
Oh, that's a form that's going to be changed.
We changed that up. That's right.
I find those every now and then.
Amy O'Brien?
Nope, the new one is Susan Bailey.
Yeah, the new, that's right. Amy has been doing it, Susan is new.
Susan does the minutes now.
She's doing it now, taking the minutes and stuff. Board of Wastewater Disposal, that's the Select Board. Solid Waste District Rep, Derek Sursow. Solid Waste District Rep Alternate, Alden Blodgett. What's a Town Service Officer do?
I don't know, I've never been called on to do it.
But you do it.
I think the Town Service Officer has to do with if there is a lawsuit against the town.
Okay.
I think that's.
You're the representative.
I think that's, yeah.
Yeah. Transportation Advisory Council. I've been doing it for the last, I don't know, six, seven years or something. Kirby Putnam, our Town Highway Foreman, is going to be taking over that position. It involves roads, bridges and a lot of things that are related to the work that he does. And I thank him for stepping up. And I'll be stepping down as being just the alternate in that position. Tree Warden is Joseph Epler. And the Water Commissioners are the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, sorry. We did this last year when we corrected everything, too.
I noticed the things that we signed earlier also say Board of Selectmen.
That would be Debbie's forms. I will, it's hard to catch them all, it's ingrained in so many forms.
They keep popping up in places because it's a document, you don't see that often.
Exactly, no.
They come up once a year and.
Board of Selectment on the Water Commissioners.
And the Wearer of Coal, Tony Weinberger. I'd like to thank all those folks on these lists for stepping up and volunteering for the community to cover all the positions that are there. And hopefully we'll be able to get someone for the Connecticut River Authority also. We'll see what that entails and so.
So do you want a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the list of 2022 appointments as read by Arnie.
Second.
So Heather's the motion. Lee, you were second down at the end there?
Yep.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All set with that list for housekeeping?
Yes.
Next item on our agenda is Paper of Record. Every year, we have to designate a paper, or as last year, I guess we designated two of them. One was totally online and one was a combination of both. Yeah, they were both like that. And in your packet, you have all the information that was submitted by the different papers regarding costs and services and how it all works. And usually we have a presentation from?
I do know that Shontay wants to speak.
Okay.
Sean May as well. I do not know if there's anybody here from the Commons on Zoom.
Well, then we could.
Not thinking so, but certainly if people want to present.
Sure. So we could start with you, Shontay Webb. Would you like to come up and speak regarding the Vermont Journal?
Hi, Shontay Webb.
It'll catch you.
Okay. I'm publisher of the Vermont Journal. I, I do want to start out by saying it's really unfortunate that we got off on the wrong foot last year. We were transitioning roles at the paper as Bob Miller got ready to retire. So as the publisher today, I certainly like to move forward and start a new chapter with the Select Board and the town. We've continuously covered Chester's news, being Select Board meetings, School Board meetings, budgets and things, events, business updates and new businesses openings, you know, all of those highlights that our readers like to see in the paper weekly or regularly. And moving forward, I'd. And moving forward, I'd like to continue those working relationships with the town and community, as well as with the board, of course, as well. I did want to note, I thought that it was great that you had your notices online and in print. I think that helps reach your biggest readership and coverage possible, and I think we share that same goal of accommodating and reaching news to as many people as we possibly can. So moving forward this year, as you support, you know, your local online news source, I hope that you can reconsider the Vermont Journal as your printed paper of record. And I think for your time for letting me speak and your consideration.
So I have a question for you, if you don't mind. What's your readership now?
We, online or in print?
In print. Well, both, I guess.
Okay. The town of Chester, we have 2,000 papers going out to all the mailboxes. Online, we've got about 20,000 to 25,000 viewers every month. I did want to note Chester was the second highest readership on our website in the state. It is all over New England and, you know, of course, the country. But yeah, Chester was the second in the state.
Okay.
Does that answer her?
Yes, thank you very much.
Anybody else have any other questions? I appreciate you coming to speak with us, and appreciate the coverage that we've had in the Vermont Journal over the year. And... Go ahead.
So is the $13 per column inch a rate, a higher level this year, or the same, or lower?
I raised the rates this year. I haven't done that in a few years, but I did raise the rates 50 cents. So I believe last year, you would have been at the 1250, so this year, you're at the 13.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions, anybody? Thank you, Shontay.
Thank you.
I don't believe there's anyone, like you said, Julie, here from the Commons.
I don't believe so. I don't know who my pet is, but...
Just to make sure, out on the Zoom part of this, no hands, no names on. And the other paper of record that we've had before is the Chester Telegraph. And... Cynthia? Cynthia Prairie, are you out there? Would you like to speak?
You're muted.
I see your lips moving, but I don't hear anything.
There we go. Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Are you able to hear me yet?
Yeah. Yeah, it's all good.
Okay, good. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, come before you tonight to say that if you had any questions whatsoever about our service over the last year, I would be more than happy to answer them. You know, I think we've had a good working relationship. I think it's worked out very well. I'm happy, very happy with the response that we've gotten to the notices that we've been publishing. But, you know, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
So Cynthia, this is Lee Gustafson.
Hi, Lee.
Just had a comment slash question. I noticed that when I try to read an article on your website, that I keep getting a pop-up that says you haven't subscribed, or you have an ad blocker on, or whatever. And to me, that is a little bit frustrating and concerning that I don't have free access to your paper, and so I'm wondering if you could address that for me.
Sure. What we did is, last year, we took all of our ads and we gave them to a different company, so we don't host our ads anymore. What happens with that is that if you have an ad blocker on, it will detect... If you have an ad blocker on, you're not able to see the ads that are on the Telegraph. So all that is, is just a prompt to ask you to take your ad blocker off. Most people do. You can whitelist the Telegraph, it doesn't cost anything. The company that we've contracted with actually will walk you through how to whitelist the Telegraph at absolutely no charge. We do have a few customers today who have insisted on keeping the ad blocker on, but they want to read the Telegraph anyway. And honestly, it's a very small number. It's only 23 people that have decided to do that. So we, you know, that's it, you know, people have actually called me up and said, you know, how do I do this? And I get them in touch with the company and show them how to do a workaround. We also will offer, you know, any kind of, you know, help whatsoever. There are so many ad blockers out there today that a lot of people will just accidentally put them on their computers, and that becomes problematic. But the company that we're working with has done some really tremendous work in trying to make sure that everybody who wants to see the Telegraph can see it.
Is there any way to identify the ISP location and allow access to your articles without having a disabled ad blocker?
Well, the thing about the ad blocker is you can just disable it only for the Telegraph. You don't have to disable it for everybody.
I understand that. I guess the question I have is, it's just a little bit frustrating that I have to go through an extra step or two in order to read an article. So I'm just expressing my concern on that.
Sure.
I certainly understand why you're doing it. I mean, you're in the job of making money, so that's one way you do it. I'm just expressing that concern.
Well, let me look into it. You had suggested just a single ISP to whitelist that.
Well, I'm just thinking that if you're, if the company that you subcontract you're advertising to can say, right, if a computer is in this or has this ISP, just let them see the article without asking for that person to unblock their ad blocker, or remove their ad blocker. Just, I'm not sure if it's possible, it's not my area of expertise, but it just...
Yeah.
It was frustrating for me. I finally gave up and used one of my... And whitelisted the paper, but it was a source of frustration for a while. And I just, I'm concerned that some of the people who would like to get the articles or the notifications aren't able to do it because they're not tech savvy, or they don't have time to call somebody, et cetera.
Yeah. What I can do, Lee, is, you know, maybe we can talk after the meeting, and I can get some more information about exactly what it is that you would like me to do, because I think, you know, like I said, this company is very responsive, they've been super great about it, and maybe I can help you out with that.
Thank you.
So Cynthia, let me ask another question, because I got a little sidetracked. The ad blocker, as you're talking about the ads that pop up on the side of the Chester Telegraph when you're reading the articles in the center, but on the side also, are the notices and stuff, those things come through?
I was just gonna say, so I received an email this morning from another individual in town who had the same issue, so I had called and talked to Sean and Cynthia about this. And one of the things that Cynthia said, and I think it's very important for people to know, is that if you block ads, you're not gonna get the town of Chester ads, unless you go through some other avenue.
Well, there's a bar at the top that says Chester Legal Notice, and you can click that every day.
Yeah.
But if you have an ad blocker, you're not going to see the two...
You're not gonna see the ones on the side, because that's where I usually see them.
And one of the people who came to us when we first found out about this was Mike Erskine, saying, I think I've got an ad on the Telegraph, but I'm not seeing it. So, but that's the whole idea, is that we have local people who are using the Telegraph to get the message out, but we'd like to make sure people get their message.
Yeah. And that would affect the town as well.
Well, you open up a paper newspaper, and the ads are all over the place also, and it's like what, you can't look at them, or you can't see, I mean, it's not exactly the same level playing field, it seems, because in a big...
Excuse me, who just spoke from the audience?
Oh, it was Sean Cunningham. He should have gotten up to the microphone, I should have reminded him, sorry. You want to repeat that, Sean, up there? No? Well, he was speaking about a customer that wasn't seeing his ads on the side, and that was an issue. And, well, you heard what Julie was saying, and that's why I was wondering how they run if they're on the side. If it's a town notice and stuff, it's considered an ad, so it might not show up.
Yeah. But I think Sean may have also said that at the very top of the page is the Chester Public Notices that you can click on and see them as well.
And they'll come up then, no matter what.
They should, yes.
Anybody have any other questions or comments or concerns regarding the Chester Telegraph? So last year, we ended up going the route of having a paper of record in print, and also a paper of record online, and we used them both. I don't remember what the costs were combined, or did we budget this year that amount, or what are the finances regarding this?
I carried the same budget, I carried the same budget as we did last year. I really did not find, we kept it to things that only had to be advertised in both. And the budget really was not that much higher. I didn't bring my town report to have the exact number with me, but it worked well. It reached more people, because you have the online onlys, the people that don't pick up the newspaper anymore, and it reached those people that really do want the newspaper. I do think it's a good way to go, and if there is any kind of an increase, it really is not significant enough. I think we're doing better getting the word out, which is really the goal at the end of the day. Right, is to get it out to people. So I think it's worth it to stick with both. The law has not changed at this point, so, you know...
And in this case, I agree with you totally, but I would go for the Vermont Journal before I would with the Commons. I know we've had a little rocky road over the years and stuff, and I think we could leave that behind us. I think they reach a lot more people in the area here. It's in the mailboxes, their coverage is always here, their articles are always well-done, and they're, you know, getting out to a lot of people.
I agree.
So that's where I think I...
That was gonna be my recommendation.
You know, the Commons, number one, I have an email here from someone who, they're not where they had been in the past, plus the coverage really doesn't cover our area very much at all.
No, but I would like to thank the Commons. They stepped up in a major way. They didn't reach our area, they were not here before, really.
We're on the fringe of their area.
They saved us. They saved us from an issue. I do want to thank them for that.
So I would think that the consensus of the board is to go with the two organizations, the Vermont Journal and the Chester Telegraph?
So do we need to appoint one of those as the official paper of record, or can we...
You can appoint them both as the official papers of record.
And besides what everyone else has talked about, I think maybe in the years to come, when the legislation catches up, and, you know, down the road, we may be able to look at this again and have one paper of record, but since we can't right now, and we're kind of in this place of transition, I think to do both is, I agree with everyone, that that's the way to go. And the two I'd recommend are the Vermont Journal and the Telegraph.
So would someone like to make that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Lee Gustafson is the motion, and Ben Whalen's the second, that we get the Vermont Journal and the Chester Telegraph as our papers of record. Any further discussion?
For discussion purposes, I do want to say that in my now, I guess, fifth time doing a paper of record, this is the first time we've had nice conversation, so I think that's important.
It's been a rocky road, and I'm glad it's behind us, and...
So I think that's important to say, and well done. And to move further, I think it's important for us to catch everybody, and so we may say in the future, well, we only need to do one, but if this is working well, I will say that if the cost is not significant, we're getting more viewers seeing what we have as far as town business. I look at the Telegraph when I'm looking at things online, and I'm certainly excited to see the Journal in the mailbox every week and certainly read it. So I hope we think about that in the future as well.
I did just grab a town report. The cost really hasn't changed. In administration in 2020, we had, when we had just one source, about 3,300. Last year was about 3,230. And the same thing in zoning, which is the other area where we would have a lot of notices, 2020 was about 2,800, and this one was about 3,800. So you're talking $1,000 throughout the course of the year.
It's well worth it to make sure that we get as many folks in town as possible.
Well, and that's the purpose.
Yeah.
I mean, the paper of record is the purpose, to get as many people.
Exactly, that's the whole point.
I want to echo what Ben said about Shontay, and I know you and I had some email conversations last year, and I really appreciate your willingness to work with us and to be open and upfront with us, so I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No?
This is a lot easier this year than it has been.
Thank you. Next item is future agenda items, new business. Does anybody have any suggestions, or Julie, what do we have on here?
Your next meeting will be your DRBN Planning Commission appointments. You're doing those interviews this evening, but you'll have the appointments next week, hopefully the solar farm. What is not on here in April, at some point in April, I'm not sure which meeting it will be, Sovera would like to make a presentation to the board on a project that they are working on for Chester, so they are anticipating that to come at one of the April meetings.
So in light of the town voters approving the cannabis retail sales, I think we need to have a conversation about that as a board. I still have a lot of unanswered questions. I think there's some things of significance that we need to discuss, so I'd like to put that on a future agenda, please.
Is there anything you want me to come to the next meeting prepared with, or just have it on the agenda for general discussion?
Well, I guess the thing that I was thinking about was having a discussion relative to the adult-oriented zoning, if that's something we want to talk about. I don't know if we have any say in that, or we can recommend the Planning Commission that this is something to look at, or whatever, but I think that's one of the things, and also trying to figure out exactly what our role and obligations and responsibilities are relative to what the state is allowing us to do.
Well, I think the part that might affect us especially is, and related to everything else that's there, is the Cannabis Control Board at a local level.
Commission.
Yeah, the committee. So if we're in that function and we decide to go that route, I would think you'd be able to investigate everything else that you're speaking of. As far as the zoning part of it, and the regulations and rules for that, I would think that would be the Planning Commission that would be dealing with that issue of it. Now, of course, we can give them direction on that, because they are gonna be presenting anything that comes forward to the board for approval later on. So if that is the case, maybe we should have a discussion as a board regarding that before we make any recommendation, or, you know, talk to the Planning Commission regarding this issue in itself. But a good start would be the Cannabis Control Commission. And we'll take it from there. Anything else?
Really? Bill Gates is trying to take over our meeting.
Yes, he is. Big Brother's coming.
They're working out?
Yeah, we're all good.
Anything else for future agenda items? Hearing none? Go on to an executive session for the purpose of interviewing for the Planning Commission and Development Review Board positions.
Do we need to adjourn this meeting, or...
Well, we don't, we have to make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, that's what I meant, sorry.
You're gonna invite in Harry Goodell.
You're gonna invite what?
You're gonna invite in Harry Goodell as number one.
Harry Goodell.
Right.